Call the meeting of September 11, 2012 to order. Roll call.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
We'll have clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Daigle?
None.
Councilman Hen?
I have none.
Councilman Selich?
None.
Councilman Hill?
None.
Councilman Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Protim Curry?
None.
Well, I hate to break things up, but number 13, which is the request to retain existing private improvements and the public right of way. It says that this is, at some point, I believe, that there was no sidewalk, but then on the illustration it says sidewalk. So is it or is it not a sidewalk there?
I don't believe there's sidewalk, but let me double check. I didn't get a chance to look at that particular.
Yeah, because that would be the only concern if it were in some way impeded traffic, foot traffic.
Let me look into that and have an answer for you.
Okay, thanks. All right. And with that, we will now proceed to reuse of the current City Hall site, which is, I imagine, why most people are here.
Yes, Mayor Gardner.
Yes.
Before you begin, I'd like to recuse myself. As many members of the community have known for a long, long time, I have a business relationship with a business in Vialito Plaza. Although I do not think that is a conflict of interest, in order to avoid any appearance of such or the potential, I will recuse myself.
Thank you. And...
Thank you.
Ms. Brant?
Good afternoon, Mayor Gardner, members of council. I'm Kim Brant, Community Development Director, and Jim Camel and I are going to give you an update as to our progress in determining what will this property look like in the next few years. We have been in the process for quite a while of looking at what the future land uses will be for this property. And back in last April, the city council did authorize staff to proceed with amendments to our general plan, our zoning code, and our coastal land use plan to change the designation of this property from public facilities to a mixed-use designation. Our mixed-use designation, as currently proposed, includes a maximum of 99 residential units and some ancillary retail uses, or it would include a 78-room hotel. Just to reacquaint everyone with the property, City Hall is approximately four acres in size when you look at the net acreage. Existing building on the property is 54,000 square feet, and that includes the fire station located towards the rear of the property as you look at Newport Boulevard. As I mentioned previously, it's currently shown as public facilities on all of our land use maps. And the site has, as a corner lot, has excellent frontage on both Newport Boulevard and 32nd In addition to processing land use amendments as it affects this property, we are also preparing a request for qualifications project, proposal, excuse me, to be sending out within the same timeframe as we're moving forward. And we do have a consultant on Boer Genna Stone who is assisting us with that process. In June, when we came back to update the city council about the land use designations and their implications, there was a lot of discussion regarding the construction of a hotel on the property and whether or not it made sense from a market standpoint, was it actually feasible that this site could support a hotel? So council requested that we go ahead and retain some consulting services to help us analyze that question, and we did retain the services of PKF Consulting, specifically Bruce Bolton, to help us analyze whether or not it was feasible to build a hotel on this site. What that study found is that the Lido Village market is not only capable of supporting a hotel at this property, but at an additional hotel, for a total of two hotels within Lido Village. The analysis determined that the City Hall property is very well-suited for a hotel, specifically an upscale boutique hotel. The site's existing lot configuration is adequate or acceptable, and given that it has such extensive frontage on both Newport Boulevard and 32nd Street. The existing location of Fire Station Number Two is not seen as a detriment to redeveloping the site with a hotel use, and it should not be considered, again, as a negative factor. In the market analysis, three hotel sizes were studied. That was 78 rooms, 100 rooms, and 150 rooms. Here are some numbers that were prepared indicating that the occupancy of each one of those scenarios would stabilize at an acceptable rate, anywhere between 72% or ranging to 76%, and that the average daily rate or room cost ranged from $195 to $220 per room. As I indicated before, the market study found that all three options are viable in terms of room counts. But PKF recommends that the ideal room size for this property is 120 rooms. The conclusion was that that was a sufficient size to have enough critical mass to be economically feasible and also keep in character with the Lido Village. So once we understood that, yes, this property is, from a market standpoint, could support a hotel, that also coincided with the other market determination that this site is also well-suited for the development of an apartment community. So given those two land use proposals or development scenarios, the next step we wanted to undertake was what was the economic implications of both of those alternatives? And we looked at each alternative in two different ways. So we asked PKF Consulting and Kaiser Marston to look at both the hotel and the apartment scenarios in terms of what type of economic benefit would be associated with those land use scenarios. We looked at a 78-room hotel, a 120-room hotel. Then we looked at 92 market rate units with 6,000 square feet of ancillary retail uses. And then we looked at solely 99 market rate rental units. One of the goals that we have identified early with the development of this site is that there would be some public improvements on the property that would help enhance and refresh the Lido Village area. So we included in that analysis the cost of installing a main public plaza on this property and promenade, as well as pedestrian promenades on 32nd Street, Via Malaga, and Via Oporto. And we also put in half of the reconstruction costs of Fire Station Number Two, which is about $2.2 million. And this graphic just indicates where we anticipate the public space would occur, and it is the perimeter of the City Hall site, and again, Via Oporto and Via Malaga. So this chart is a little bit difficult to read on a PowerPoint. We did provide it in a paper format to you in legal size, and I have it divided in two space in two different categories. So this is the summary of the analysis that PKF looked at for the development of the 78-room hotel and the 120-room hotel. The development costs were identified at $18.5 million and $29.8 million respectively. And then the cost of the public improvements, I called a little bit of a shopping list because it depends on what the council ultimately wants to see and guards in terms of what those public improvements would be composed of, but it can range anywhere from $5.5 million to almost $9 million.
Is that the fire station?
That includes the fire station. But again, that's half of the fire station costs, and that was just an assumption for the analysis.
Why, to go back, without assumption?
I thought the background was that the remaining balance would be funded from another source. I don't know, Dave, if you want to add anything further.
Because that fire station serves such a large area, we didn't assume that automatically this site development would cover the whole cost of its construction. We could.
I know, but the fire station, regardless of whatever we do here, the fire station needs to be built, right?
It does.
So why is it even a factor in the decision at all? That's what I understand.
It's a factor only in the public benefit calculation, because we did see it as a public benefit, and it could be pulled out if, in another analysis, with that change.
All right. I just, I guess, I thought the goal here was to analyze the two basic options, a residential option and a hotel option. In either case, does it matter whether the fire station, what those numbers are?
But we put it in the same level at either case, so it's kind of net neutral.
Well, it just seems like it's clouding or confusing.
Okay.
If we're adding something to the issue that didn't really need to be added.
Didn't need to be added.
Yeah. I was just wondering why you did it, but I...
Well, Councilmember Rosansky, we have both Kathy Head and Bruce Bolton here, and they can, I think, explain if you were to remove the cost, the $2.2 million, in terms of how it affects the bottom line for each one of the scenarios, because it's a constant assumption. So we can have them address that at the conclusion.
Okay, but to me, it's like, we have to spend that money regardless. Even if we don't do anything here, we have to build a new fire station. So I don't, under all scenarios, we're going to rebuild that fire station, right? So why is it a factor? That's what I, maybe...
So basically, you just add 2.8 million each line, 2.2.
Well, that brings up another question on it, since Steve brought it up. In the remaining amount of the money, is there anything in there that would not ordinarily be required of a developer to develop this property? Are we throwing in other things that we want as opposed to what we would normally require a developer to provide?
Yes, that is what those public benefits are.
All of it, so they're all stuff that we wouldn't get if it was privately owned?
Well, I think that, well, we're looking at a public plaza, so that isn't something that you would normally find in conjunction with a private sector development and also pedestrian promenade on the property. And then we're also looking at improvements or creating a pedestrian promenade on the surrounding streets. And again, that is not something that you would normally associate with a private property developer.
Okay, well, then maybe I'm misunderstanding. Are you saying that the developer, whoever it is of this site, is going to pay for half of the fire station? Is that what you're talking about?
That's the way I understand it.
Oh, okay. Well, I didn't understand that.
Thanks.
Okay. So you're asking the developer now to pick up half of the cost of the fire station?
I wondered why you were...
That's what this is saying, yeah. Okay. And why are we assuming that they're going to do that?
Because we can. This would be something typical that we would...
Well, yeah, but, you know, any developer's going to come in, and there's a cost for that. I mean, they're going to pay us rent or whatever based on the cost. I mean, if we're loading it up with extra cost. I mean, I guess it's a way for us to find...
Yeah, it's not uncommon for us to associate a change in use and then get a public benefit such as half or full fire station construction out of that.
I understand that. I negotiated most of the development agreements here for the last few years, so I understand by getting public benefit. I just...
Okay. I guess I understand a little bit better.
Councilman Hill, did you have...
Well, the public benefit component is very important because that plays into the residual land value, which is shown on the chart. Oops, excuse me. Which is shown in the chart in the bold. It is the residual land value that will form the basis of whatever type of ground lease arrangement or rate that we want to assign to the property or to a future developer. So that is an important discussion that needs to be thoroughly understood as we move forward. And the last thing that we ask...
Before you pass on that, the residual terminal cap rate and the residual discount rate, those are capitalization rates that were used to discount that, to get to those numbers there?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Let me have Bruce Bolton explain that in better detail than I can.
Yes, the actual, the top number is just actually, it says land value upon completion. It's really value on completion. It's the value of the overall improvements. And to get to that value, we used a terminal cap rate of eight and a half percent on the end of a 10-year assumed holding period, and we used a discount rate of 11% on the income stream, just like you would normally do a discounted cash flow. So that's where the value is derived.
Those numbers seem kind of high to me. Where do they come from?
Well, for a hotel, for a to-be-built hotel, that's kind of the numbers you would normally use.
So you're discounting the present value by 11%?
Right, the earnings and the assumed sale at the end of 10 years.
Wow.
It could be conservative. I mean, you could, in reality, you could say you could use a lower rate, but that is kind of...
I would think so. I don't know anybody who's getting 11% cap rate on anything these days.
Well, the discount rate is the cap rate plus inflation. So the cap rate is actually, our soon-going cap rate is actually 8%.
Even 8% seems kind of rich. Maybe that's what it is in hotel deals. I'm not real familiar with that.
It is kind of, it's actually the lower end of the range for to-be-built hotel deals. Because hotels normally carry somewhat of a premium over other residential estate.
Yeah, Bruce. So we're all clear about precisely what it is that we're talking about. When we say a boutique hotel, can you give us an example of either a comparable hotel with the brands that we're talking about, for so that they can sort of visualize exactly what this is being contemplated here for the site?
Well, it's not necessarily a branded hotel. This would be probably not finished at the same level, but something like the Shutter's Hotel of Santa Monica, just at a lower price point, obviously at a lower finish level. There is a relatively new hotel, the Canary Hotel in Santa Barbara. This would be kind of in that level. It's the one in downtown Santa Barbara. There is a hotel called the West Inn in Carlsbad, right off the, in Carlsbad. This would be kind of in that order. So essentially, what we're thinking of is a, not a luxury hotel, but a four-star equivalent hotel with food and beverage services, meeting space, and so on. Probably unbranded.
Yeah, that was actually going to be my question. Was there any consideration to a branded hotel? I mean, why?
The only reason not to is because, just because of the character of the area. You've got such a defined character within the overall area in terms of wanting to fit a beach theme and so on. It's harder to do a branded hotel that kind of fits that theme. There are also, in the price points that we recommended, there are not a lot of hotel brands that are appropriate for something that small with those kinds of facilities at that price point. You could do a Westin, for example, or a Renaissance, or a J.W. Marriott, or something like that, but you wouldn't necessarily do some, those kinds of hotels at that small price point. Plus, you've got a lot of demand base in the city that you're really needed from a revenue standpoint. You're not going to get, in other words, our feeling was, it's really not going to add much to the hotel, and therefore, you're just paying for it in your land rent.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. And the last part of the chart talks about the economic impact in terms of retail spending within the community, and that's both the direct and indirect. And I have another slide, a couple forward from this that goes into the details. But the hotels, the one-year estimate is $20.6 million for the 78-room hotel, and it's $29.4 million with the 120-room hotel. Then moving into the apartment scenarios, Kaiser Marston did a similar type of analysis, looking at what the development cost and the land value would be upon completion and what the residual land value would be after the public improvements. And again, it's the same list of public improvements that we assumed for the hotel development scenarios. As you can see with the numbers, they are substantially higher than with, when compared to the hotel scenarios in respect to the residual land value, and that's because the land value upon completion is smaller for the, excuse me, for the hotels when compared to the apartments. But on the flip side, when you look at the economic impact in respect to retail spending in the city, you see that the apartment scenarios are nearly 10 times less than compared to the hotel scenario. The 92-unit apartment is about a $2.1 million contribution, and the 99-apartment scenario is about $2.2 million. I have a slide...
What percentage of that economic impact actually ends up in the city's coffers?
We have an analysis of the TOT, but we have not completed, I think, the final step in looking at the indirect and direct spending associated with both the hotels and apartments. And what we would like to do is go ahead and find out what the taxable sales dollars are and come back with a number, but we don't have that as of yet.
So would you like to do a fiscal impact analysis?
It would, it would. We could do that. So this is a breakdown by categories, the 78-room hotel versus the 120-room hotel in terms of the spending on an annual basis. The multiplier is the same for both the apartments and the hotel of 1.3 in terms of calculating the indirect spending impacts. And in comparison, here is the breakdown for the apartment scenarios. So in summary, the apartment scenarios have a higher development cost when compared to either the boutique hotel scenarios, and they also have, therefore, a higher land value upon completion. It's anticipated that the potential annual ground rent would be higher for the apartment scenarios, but again, the boutique hotel's direct and indirect annual economic impact on the local community is anticipated to be significantly higher. We have calculated that the annual transient occupancy tax would range anywhere from $476,000 to $680,000 per year for the hotel scenarios. So in conclusion, the City Hall site is well-suited for either a boutique hotel development or an apartment community. We feel that both land uses are economically viable and will have a positive impact on the community. Initially, we are looking at, if we were to do a 120-room hotel, we are still calculating or trying to determine if it will require a measure S review or require to be put on the ballot for approval, because this does require a general plan amendment. We are still conducting that analysis, and we don't have a definite conclusion yet. We want to proceed, in terms of next steps, with our processing of the mixed-use land use amendments. We want to return to you in two weeks at your evening session with the final market feasibility and economic studies that have been prepared by both PKF and Kaiser Marston. And we will... and we will get those documents out in advance for not only your review, but for the community to review. We are interested in seeing what your direction is for a larger hotel on the property. Initially, we looked at 78 rooms. We are curious if you are interested in looking at a 120-room hotel or possibly even a 150-room hotel on this property. And we also want to pursue the request for qualifications process. We could do a packet that talks about the entire mixed-use land use designation and the capability of developing either a hotel on the property or an apartment community on the property, or possibly a combination of both, but we would be interested in hearing what the City Council has to say in that respect. And again, as we, as I mentioned previously, any type of development package for this property would include a range of public benefits, and it would be interesting if you had any feedback on that as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time, and again, I, we do have our consultants with us. Councilman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this study confirms some of my initial thoughts on the site, as well as a few surprises. It confirmed my opinion that the residential would return the highest residual land value and therefore the highest direct revenue to the city on a leasing basis. It confirmed my feeling that the fire station would not be an impediment to the hotel, nor would the configuration of the property thereby making the necessity of a lot line adjustment not something that we needed to pursue. The things that surprised me were the fact that the consultant felt that this was the best site. I had thought that Lido Marina Village would be a better site because of its water furnished, but his conclusions on that certainly make sense to me as I read them. And the other thing that surprised him was the fact that there would be a market here for two hotels. So what we have is we've got two scenarios, hotel or residential use, and the residential has a much higher residual value than the hotel directly, and so we would get a higher rent there. So in essence, to do a hotel, we're actually subsidizing the site by the difference in the rent that we would get between the residential and the hotel, assuming that we would get an acceptable proposal from a hotel developer. I think the, what it boils down to, the policy decision that the council's going to have to make is when we get into these indirect economic impacts as to whether we feel that the information is, number one, is substantiated, and that that is something that we want to get into, and that is that we want to use this site to subsidize or stimulate surrounding development as opposed to maximizing the revenue we get from this site to be used for other projects and other things that we want to do in the city. And that's going to be, that's going to be, I think, a policy decision that we're going to have to evaluate here and decide, and decide what we want to do. But clearly, the residential on a direct basis is the highest residual land value and would provide us the highest, highest direct revenue. Now, the fiscal impact that Kim was talking about doing, that would certainly shed some light on it because it would include things like property tax and TOT revenue, which would be on top of the rent revenue, and to see what, what the final numbers would be from that basis. Anyway, those are my initial comments.
Councilman Hill?
Well, I, I too find the study very interesting. I think that, as Councilman Hill said, it both confirmed some assumptions and brought some surprises. I think that the decision before the council is really answering or addressing the question of what the end game is. And the alternatives are, are we focusing only on this site to merely deal with the Lido Village area? Or are we trying to not only improve the Lido Village area, but also generate reliable and predictable income that can be leveraged into building out the other items, or at least an item, of the West Newport Beach Plan, i.e. the West Newport Beach Community Center? And if we have other funding for the community center and we think we can take care of that and we need focus on nothing else and the end game is right here, then the hotel would make more sense. And we would never add any housing at all because it would be very difficult to get any housing through the Coastal Commission to put it on the Lido Village side. If, on the other hand, there's a broader picture for West Newport Beach than just improving Lido Village area, and we wish to also add a West Newport Beach Community Center, then the end game changes, and it's important that we maximize our revenue from this site. While it would generate less sales revenue, it would still generate additional sales revenue. And so once again, when I look at the broader picture of not only the City Hall site, but the Duda property, the Lido Village property, what we call the Triangle property, all of these elements working together generate a substantial increase in revenue that would support the kind of upscale retail, community, restaurant, food and beverage that Lido has very clearly said that they want, and at the same time, maximize our revenue stream to allow us to leverage that into West Newport Beach Community Center. So I think that we're 90% there on our analytical, and that we need to go one more step to see what the fiscal impact result would be by pushing through the economic impact to see what would trickle down to the city with respect to additional reliable, predictable funds. So within the alternatives that have been talked about and the desire to keep moving because this project's not going to wait for us, this, we're moving out of here and we need to do something to prevent this site from becoming an attractive nuisance, or an unattractive nuisance, that I would recommend that we move forward in the RFQ phase of our RFQ/RFP process to select a developer to work on the site, to move forward in a joint manner, so that we request qualifications from interested developers that would be apartment or hotel, possibly even finding developers that would be very suitable for apartment and hotel. And that would keep our options open. It would allow us to move forward on our overall schedule. But I would also then say that before we would make the screening from the RFQ down to maybe four to five firms to submit specific proposals, that by that point in time, we would have to be more specific if we really wanted to get serious proposals for this property.
Thank you. Both of you have a great deal of expertise in this. I have none, but my take is slightly different. I don't see this, even if we did a hotel, I don't see that as simply talking about this area, Lido Marina Village. I see impacts on Mariners Mile. I see impacts on West Newport, all to the good, something like this that, and I don't know, we have to look at it further, but something like this that would raise a number of areas and stimulate it, because we have nothing, we would have nothing like this in this immediate area. So I think its impact would be even greater than, say, if we plopped another one down in Fashion Island. That's the voice of absolutely no experience, but just a sense of what could be. Any other comments? Stephen?
Yeah, I have a couple. My level of experience is probably just a hair above yours, so I won't claim that I know all the answers. I agree with Rush, though. I think we do need to move forward with the dual approach because, and following up on what Ed said, I'm actually surprised at some of these numbers. The hotel numbers, although a rent number might be significantly lower than what we might get for apartments here, the numbers for TOT and sales tax are kind of eye-popping. I never even, I didn't think it would be half that. And so, you know, if you're looking at almost $700,000 for the larger boutique hotel and maybe even another couple hundred thousand dollars in sales tax, you know, because we get 1% of that $20 million comes to the city, and we're talking about almost $1 million between what the rent, the TOT tax, and the sales tax. I don't think we're going to see $1 million off of a residential development here. So it is a significant amount of money, and I look forward to seeing the fiscal analysis because I think that will go a long way. As far as the hotel versus residential, personally, I do like the aspect of the hotel that's going to, you know, we sit up here and we talk about revitalizing the peninsula. We've had, fortunately, I'm not on any of those committees because they've been having meetings after meetings after meetings and trying to come to some decision as to how we can revitalize the peninsula, revitalize this area, revitalize Mariners Mile. And, you know, I'm sure adding apartments to this area will bring in a number of people that'll spend money, but, you know, what drives this community to a large degree is the TOT tax that we see, and it's a visitor-serving community. And bringing in a hotel with 120 rooms, depending on the brand or the type of hotel, I think could be an asset. We don't have a lot, we don't really have a hotel on the peninsula other than the smaller, little hotels that are here. The closest thing that we have to a hotel is the Best Western, I think, on Coast Highway in West Newport and, or even west of the bay. And I understand that that hotel does very well, and it has, I think, what I understand from Gary, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, has a rental rate in excess of what we're even talking about here for a Best Western, which shocked the hell out of me. I mean, I, you know, I thought, oh, actually, we do have another Best Western over here in West Newport. Yeah, but it's a smaller, I'm talking about 100-room, there's really no 100-room hotels on the west side of the bay. You know, a significant hotel where you could have a restaurant in the hotel, where you could have maybe some meeting rooms or conference rooms for small get-togethers, you know, people from out of town coming here and want a vacation on the beach and do a little business as well. So, you know, I, again, I'm no expert at hotels, that's why we hired PKF to do that, but even, I don't see the $195 a night as being out of the question. In fact, I would think that it might even be higher than that, and so we might even see a bigger benefit. So again, I support the two-pronged approach. Let's keep moving forward because we don't want to sit on this parcel forever. We have a lot of projects that we want to get done in this city, and we need the money, we need the revenue, but I'd definitely like to see what the revenue's going to be on either proposal. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Brotem Curry?
Well, first of all, I'd be very interested in hearing what the community has to say about it. You know, when this was up before, it's the last time, I asked to have the study done because I think you have to have numbers in front of you to make these kinds of decisions, and we have the numbers, and I think they are enlightening, and they're certainly not perhaps what I would have expected either, based on some of those conversations I've had. And I think the next step is to see whether or not a developer actually believes enough in one of, in these numbers to put a proposal on the table and to move forward. But, you know, I personally don't care whether it's apartments or hotels, but I care about it since it's economically viable. And I was, I'm pleased that we have this analysis so that we can make a decision, and I think the hotel numbers are much more encouraging than what it thought, and I think very surprising, and I think very good for the community.
Councilman Deagle? You're voting.
I'd like to hear what the community has to say. Appreciate the analysis, though I thought that was very insightful.
All right. I'll open this up for public comment now. Please limit your comments to five minutes. You're all here, and you're all satisfied, and you don't have opinions. Come on! This is Newport Beach.
This is the biggest study session, room full that we've had, and no one wants to come down. I can't believe it.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for letting me speak again. I am Leland D. Iverson. I live at 121 Via Coron on Lido Isle. I'm a residential architect and land planner, and I have always been in favor of the hotel use on the site. I never thought that the apartment use was the highest and best use of an absolutely spectacular site in your city, and as a number of you have said, we are really lacking this use. The multiplier on the numbers that Mr. Bolton has presented are amazing. I thought they would be good, but they're better than I thought. I would like to remind you of one of your, the memos from a meeting of October 27th in 2011, which Todd Larnier was talking, and you were revising Chapter 5, and you stated that you would allow future programming of the City Hall site to benefit the broader village, not just the development itself. So it's important to me that, living here for, I've been in Newport, I have a homeowner in 35 years and on Lido for 13 years, so I really love the area. So for me, it's a good, I think you're going to get more money for the city, but I think that the residents are going to get more from a hotel use than apartment site use. I would encourage you to not decide on the apartments. It seems like the revenue is 10 times more. The apartments, in fact, there are many people, and you'll get a lot of feedback on this, who have a negative feeling about the apartments. You know, they're very concerned about apartments on that site. I think that you should do an RFP for the hotel, hotel developer only, that there is really no reason to waste the taxpayers' money to do an apartment, to also RFP for apartment developers, when the city, or at least the residents of the city are, I could, I don't know if overwhelming, but there's a lot of them who do not want the apartment. So, I mean, the maximum, you get a maximum revenue for the city, you get a better benefit for the village, and I think, as Mayor Gardner said, it would be a wonderful thing to, as you leave this village, you're leaving here now, to leave something behind that is really a legacy for your, for your time here. Thank you.
I don't remember saying that, but I'm glad I did.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is George Schroeder. You know, I'm just speaking for myself here, and I'm going to have maybe a different opinion than some of my neighbors here, but I think if a hotel gets built or if high-end residential gets built, because I did take the time on my laptop computer to look up the Canary Hotel in Santa Barbara. Basically, it's a nice-looking four-story building, built sidewalk to sidewalk. It looks a bit like the Colony in Fashion Island, so I think whatever gets built here has got to look the same, if it's a hotel or if it's high-end apartments. Living in the area for 25 years, I'm okay with high-end residential here. There isn't a lot of that down here. I think it would be a good income stream, but I do believe more of the residents have this emotional attachment to a boutique hotel. And like, I've asked myself and some of the people who work in this city, what exactly is that? Because if the residential is built, it will be occupied, there'll be an income stream. If hotels are built, I live down here, sometimes, some parts of the year it's very busy, and then some parts of the year it's slow. But then again, I'm sure the hotel on Mariners Mile doesn't have the same seasonal traffic that we have on the peninsula, so it may be successful. Then I just wanted to say that I think to say that if a hotel gets built, there may not be an income stream to support a community center in West Newport Beach. That community center will only be built if a new police station is built. If a new police station is built, there will free up a site in Fashion Island where you can build a very nice, high-end residential to generate quite a bit of income. So I don't think it has to be, we have to be concerned that we can't do what needs to be done in West Newport Beach if one project is chosen over the other, but I'm okay with residential. I think it will make sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Laurie Morris, West Newport, Council. I just want to thank PKF, Mr. Bolton, did an excellent job bringing the idea that we would all like to see here, a boutique hotel. This is a very valuable piece of property, and a lot of times you can't look at, I know we have a lot of things we need to fund, but money is not everything. What would bring people to Newport Beach and really revitalize West Newport would be this nice hotel. My concern is that the original was the 78 rooms. There's a 42-room difference in what was originally planned to the 120 that would make money, is how the Coastal Commission would view that difference. Is there, do we see any problem taking something like that to them, that, something that large? Is that...
More, more visitors? They usually like that.
Is that, so, in essence, the Coastal Commission also would like to see more of a boutique hotel atmosphere instead of apartments, that's a public benefit that they are always championing. And I think when we bring this forward, we do need to bring it as a complete package, not as a split proposal with developers who can always do and say and be, you know, bring the money to say, hey, this is what we can do. You're, you're never going to beat the best of these apartment developers because that's their job. That's, they need to get in here and make some money, and that's what they're going to do. So I don't think parsing this out and having two different types of proposals brought forward and wasted money, I don't think that's a good idea. I think that in respect to what goes on this site, everybody should care. Not caring about what goes here... Not caring about what goes here is not what I want to hear from my council, it should be, everyone should care. That kind of struck me as odd, but...
Point, well, let me just be clear about that. I care very deeply about it, I don't have a preference versus hotels or the apartments.
Okay, well, the way it was said kind of sounded like you didn't care what happened down here, so I took it kind of personally. Okay. I think we need to start here, in the revitalization of this. When Mr. Hill says, well, he doesn't sure if this is, you know, the place, or, you know, we need to look forward and pass this, and that's great, you know, as a council, that's what you're supposed to be doing, but we need to start here. This is where it will all begin, especially for West Newport, because we don't have a lot here that my family wants to come, you know, and stay, and, you know, they come to my house, but, you know, we walk around, and it just, we need, we need this boutique hotel. And I hope that all of you will champion it and bring it forward.
Just to take every in-law's, huh, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, exactly. Thank you, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Gary Sherwin, President and CEO of Visit Newport Beach. Many of your comments were already going through my head, so I'll keep my remarks kind of confined to the impact of this hotel project on our tourism industry. When we're out there selling Newport Beach to the world, we have a lot of pros and very few cons, but the one con that we do face in selling this destination to the world is that even though our name is Newport Beach, we really have very few hotel rooms that are on or really near the beach. And we do lose some business because of that. Our friends up in Huntington Beach kind of beat us to the punch sometimes, but we think having a hotel that will afford visitors and families the ability to walk to the beach, and it would be of an upscale quality, is an important niche that's currently overlooked, and will certainly enhance our competitiveness as a destination. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe Reese, I live here on the peninsula. I was born and raised in Anaheim, and I lived there, or I worked there for 30 years. And what I saw in Anaheim in the 70s is they tore down their downtown area, they completely eliminated it. And their residential area down there, they built a bunch of apartments pocketed around where all the residential area was. And what, what happened in Anaheim is that all the families started to move out, they didn't want to live there anymore, because it was not a destination spot for them to live. I saw gang members move in, I saw bad neighborhoods come, and I saw the whole area just was negatively impacted by the vision, or poor vision, that the leaders had there. And I'm not saying that this is going to be a down, a bad apartment complex or anything like that that you're building. What I'm saying is that this is an opportunity to have a good vision for where the future goes, and where we're going to take this particular area on the peninsula. I think this is an outstanding opportunity, that a boutique hotel will have a ripple effect in a positive way, that we're going to lose our tattoo parlors, we're going to lose some of our lower-scale businesses that are in the area there. Instead, we're going to have businesses that come in that support this hotel. That's going to be a very positive impact on the community, that's going to be a positive ripple effect. So you have the opportunity to have a vision here for the future. It's easy to build apartment complexes, because they're economically quick, just like Anaheim did back 30 years ago, it was economically smart and quick at that time to get quick money. But right now Anaheim's trying to find a downtown, they're trying to build a downtown so they can bring that back what they used to have. So I'd like to see this council have a good, positive vision of looking at the positive impacts that this could have by building a nice hotel in this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to speak today.
Name, please.
Cindy Kohler, West Newport. I just want to remind the council that the vision that the residents have was for a landmark destination, and we have a really unique opportunity to do that on this space. I keep hearing about this hotel on the Vornado site, I spoke with most of the stakeholders. That's private property, there's a lot involved, and I don't see that happening in the near future. We have an opportunity right here to change West Newport. I was on the revitalization cap, and I would encourage you to come, come to my house, I'll take you for a walk through West Newport if you don't live down in this area. We need help down here, and I think this would really help the entire area, the entire peninsula. So I hope you keep that in mind, and the view as a landmark destination that's close to the beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jack Tingley, and I live in East Bluff, and I think we all are on the same page here, but I want to remind everyone that the most important thing that I think that's been said tonight is speed. The last thing anyone here wants is to come by and look at another green fence for four years. And the quicker that we can get our engine running, and we can get a developer in, and get everything taken care of according to process, the better off we are, and the happier, the quicker we're going to have a grand opening. So I think speed is the key. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Don Roberson. I live at 474 Westminster, and my background's in construction and real estate development, and I've built my share of apartments, and I look at this thing artistically. And when I think about apartments, I think of yards and yards of stucco, flat roofs, parking structures, gang mailboxes, that type of thing. And I think of a boutique hotel, I think of French doors, lace curtains, shingle siding, and so, in my humble opinion, oh, this is a landmark, like my previous speaker suggested, a landmark location, it's really the terminus of the 55 freeway when you think about it. So I think we should go for the boutique hotel and set the standard so high that it'll have that ripple effect that he talked about. All right.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor and Honorable Councilman, Council, my name is Steve Ray. Just a couple of thoughts regarding both of the options that you're looking at. As far as residential housing, you recently approved the Banning Ranch project, which includes 1,375 homes for the west side, and as a part of that, the developers are committed to providing a certain number of affordable housing units. I guess under the agreement, they're going to, looking at providing up to 50% of those units on-site at Banning Ranch, but the other 50% have to be provided someplace else. You know, maybe you should talk to them, that might be the developer of choice here, to have them build the development, to the housing development here. Second thing, as part of that Banning Ranch development, you also approved a boutique hotel on-site. And I know under the agreement, they have the option of kind of sneaking out from under that and not building the hotel, but as of right now, the hotel, the boutique hotel is approved there. Regarding boutique hotels, I've attended the last, well, for about the last few years, almost every Coastal Commission hearing, and when these projects come up like this with hotels along the beach, the one thing, comment I hear so many times from the Coastal Commission is, we have enough expensive hotels in the coastal zone, we actually need more affordable hotels in the coastal zone. So just a caution, when you're looking at how expensive or how fancy you're going to make the hotel, Coastal Commission may have some other thoughts on that matter.
Thank you. Anyone else? My goodness, all right. I'll bring it back to council. Yes, Councilman Savage?
He actually brought up a good point that one of the other speakers brought up. What, Jim, what does our local coastal plan require in this affordable? I know we did something on hotels in agreeing to a certain percentage of affordable hotel rooms.
You're correct, that was back in 2009 when that amendment went through, there was, there's policy language in there that, in essence, requires us to mitigate the loss of any lower-cost visitor accommodations that are eliminated, obviously, we wouldn't be doing that. There is language in there that talks about mitigating the impact of lower, on lower-cost accommodations due to the creation of timeshares or even higher-cost hotels. But I was looking at the room rates that we're looking at here, and I don't think that that's actually going to be considered high cost for the coastal zone in this area, so although I do agree that the Coastal Commission is looking for, they often prefer lower-cost accommodations, I don't think the rate of $210 a night is actually considered high cost. It's something we'll have to look forward, look at and evaluate as we move forward.
Well, what I would suggest is that you take a look at some of the projects that have recently been approved by the Coastal Commission, and my recollection is on some of the things I've seen on the agenda that they've exacted out of, out of developers that didn't want to do affordable hotel rooms in a range of $10,000 to $35,000 a room in mitigation fees to be used elsewhere. And if that in fact's the case, then we should have that included as a development cost in here, because somebody has to pay that.
Yeah, yeah, we'll take that, we'll take a look at that and take that into account.
Anything else? All right, direction to staff?
I agree.
Does everybody want to move along the two-pronged path?
Yes, my question is, are you planning on issuing the RFQ before we get the fiscal analysis? I mean, it's coming back in two weeks.
What we'd like to do is come back to you in two weeks with the final documents, and you'll have the full fiscal analysis and, and all the background that went into the conclusions that we presented to you today. At this point, we will continue with the two-pronged preparation of the RFQ, we will not be releasing the RFQ in the next two weeks. So, that's our game plan.
All right. Mayor Protem Curry?
Have we determined that the 120-room hotel or any of the other alternatives actually require a room light vote?
We are working on that right now, and we can have that information in, for September 25th.
Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, I think it's important that we move along on the two-pronged process here, because we don't know that we're going to get a, an acceptable hotel proposal, so we need to have a backup strategy here. I mean, I, you know, it'd be nice if we did, but if we don't, we need to have some kind of a backup plan here.
I would, I would also say that there's a significant difference between the RFQ and the RFP. In the RFQ, we're not asking them to propose anything, we're asking for their qualifications should they be selected to propose something. And so I think we're pretty safe in generating great interest in that. I would never recommend that we go to RFP on a split opportunity, because no one would take us serious. We have to have made our decision before we go to RFP, but let's not slow down, let's go to RFQ and ask for a broad range of qualifications.
Okay, do you have enough?
I just want to reiterate what I've heard. The RFQ, when we talk about a dual track, we would issue an RFQ inviting folks familiar with the hotel development to respond, we'd also issue an RFQ inviting folks familiar with an apartment construction to respond.
Same RFQ.
Same one, including both things. Okay. It's a combination, all right.
And then we will have more information in two weeks, and we may be able to be more specific in our direction to you also. All right, good. All right, moving along then, public comments. Public comments are invited on closed-session agenda items, as reflected in Item Two, closed session of the regular meeting agenda, and on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. All right, do we have any public comments?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I wanted to talk for a minute about our new City Hall. As you and I heard at the beginning of our last presentation, we are today standing on or adjacent to Newport Boulevard, which for 60 years has seemed a very appropriate address for a City Hall for the city of Newport Beach. Back at your Valentine's Day study session, when you were debating the issue of backyard chickens, I spoke to you about our city's lack of any rich heritage to avocados, and wondered if there might be some merit in changing the name of the segment of the street on which our new City Hall will stand, from the very unmemorable and slightly silly Avocado Avenue, to something like Civic Center Drive, or perhaps something even more creative than that. Seven months later, and three months from the move, I haven't heard any more about that, but it still sounds like a good idea to me. I might point out that former Mayor Ridgway, when faced with a similar situation of owning a piece of retail property near the airport that had an obscure back-street address, asked you and received a curb cut to MacArthur Boulevard, so that he would have a more easily recognizable address. The new City Hall will also be adjacent to MacArthur, but hopefully your concern for traffic patterns is a little bit more than his. But I still think having a catchier and more appropriate name, address for our new Civic Center would be an asset both for the city and for the business owners abutting it. The main argument I've heard against this is that the existing business owners would be inconvenienced, having to redo their stationary, business cards, and advertising. Well, I for one think the pain would be short-lived, and like changing telephone area codes, the great minds of our city should be able to work out a way to make a smooth transition. And in the end, just like Mr. Ridgway, those business owners would much prefer to have a catchy and readily recognizable address to the obscure one. So I would just like to suggest again that you give some consideration to this. Thank you.
Thank you. I do think, I like that idea, myself.
I like the idea, too.
Oh, you're back. Any other public comments?
If you do want to pursue that further, please mention it during things that you like placed on a future agenda, I will consider that a work product.
All right. Is there any other public comment? Then we will adjourn to closed...
I had one question, I think, I actually, I also like that idea, too, of the potential name change, and on the late item, the Bayside Marina one, I know tomorrow night, the public's anticipating our discussions on the overall commercial rents, are we preempting that discussion in any way by talking about the Bayside Marina rent?
No, the Bayside matters specific to that matter.
All right, we will adjourn to closed session.